Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our new setup. Hello. Hi, everybody. Welcome, welcome to our meeting. These chairs are not radioactive. If anybody would like to sit on them. It's like, it's like church, I think. You know, we all look for the back of it. Those chairs are for you as well. First, I'll make a motion to reconvene in open session at 7:00.
Second?
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the April 10, 2019 minute. Minute of the meeting, second. Roll call back to McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kudyskis.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell is absent this evening.
Would you please join me in standing for the moment of silence and pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have a presentation by the Potier Citizens Elementary School.
Good evening. So, the video that we're showing tonight is actually one that we submitted for the Don Quixote grant. This grant was released thanking Mr. Burke for sharing it with us in hopes that, one, in, there'll actually be three schools throughout the state that might have the opportunity to have a fitness center or facility built within their school. So, we were hoping that we might be one of the three. So, enjoy. Our students are going to show you exactly why we deserve this. Thank you.
What?
Hi, welcome to Potier Citizens Elementary School campus. Relocated in Wausau, Rhode Island, and our two buildings with approximately 1,000 students. About 87% of our students receive free breakfast lunch. We are definitely in need of a physical activity center. With limited resources and limited access to various playgrounds or safe space, students don't always have the time to go outside, be active, play, or participate in any kind of physical activity. Here are some reasons why we really need and deserve this fitness center.
We're able to work out more. Who does that work for?
If we had a new fitness center, we can exercise more. Which could even work.
We are getting ready to have that.
And usually they're saying we're technically excited about working out.
If we had workout classes, we would use it to feel less stressed.
It'll be great to have a new fitness center because if parents see us working out in the gym, they would want to work out in the gym as well.
Hi, my name is Colin Moore. I'm a teacher here at Citizens Elementary School at Potier Campus. I've stuck into the principal's office to answer some of these questions for you about why we need a fitness center. What's, what's the food we prioritize within fitness? Well, we have box, we do recess rocks, we have girls on the run, we do all kinds of before and after school activities, but it still doesn't seem like it's enough. So, what we really do, we create the physical fitness center.
We would like a new fitness center to fail angry shop.
The reason why I would like a new fitness center is because I live in an apartment building and there's nowhere to make that for that.
Hi there, I am the recess rock coach at Potier Elementary School, and I'm here to talk to you about how we have limited access and resources to be able to have our kids get into the exercise and things to be able to get into. If we had more resources, they would be able to do and make lifelong changes and goals to be healthier.
Where are you going to go to higher school?
Out of the exercise.
The kids that they're young.
I'm going to the ladies' garden.
I remember what I did this year.
I need absolutely a girlfriend.
What's your why and no?
Hi, Caroline.
Hi, Lauren.
And we're the coaches of girls on the run at Citizens Memorial Elementary School for grades 3 to 5. We coach girls on the run. It's a curriculum-based program that teaches girls to be confident, to be healthy. We teach them like social skills that will help them in life, and we hope so. We lead up to a 5K in May, so we're toward 5K. So, we're constantly practicing to lead up to that point. And our girls are always practicing running, but with an uneven schoolyard, a fitness center would be great practice for practice. If we had a new fitness center, we would work out more and hang out with our friends more.
Hello, it's me, Alan. I'm over here at Citizens at Potier Campus. Quick answer to question number five. What are the goals for a new fitness center? Our goal would be here at Potier Citizens. We need to educate the students on lifelong fitness skills they can use not only in their elementary school lives, but as lives in general, and maybe even affect their parents and siblings. That would be our big goal at Citizens at Potier.
Welcome to our award stage. As you can see, we have done lots of things to try to encourage physical activity for our students, including girls on the run, box, recess rocks, and some of the indoor activities that we try to repot. As you can see, this isn't an ideal space, but we're working hard to overcome adversity and move forward to get our kids to be active as best we can. We really need this grant.
Yay!
Congratulations, that was fantastic. What a great presentation. Let's hope we get the grant. Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Bob Lozad. I'm the meeting supervisor for the Wausaukeet School Department. It's been recently brought to my attention that the facilities director's job has been halted. With knowing that, I feel what I'm about to say is deserving. For the last nine months, I've worked under the direction of Al from Lutriani. Since July of 2018, we've worked together for the first time preparing for the opening of schools, capital projects, the closing and opening of the Wausaukeet Area Career Technical Center, and the issue we're now facing with the administration building. And also the construction of the home elementary school playground. With that said, I feel that the Wausaukeet School Department and the community has truly benefited from the hard work and dedication Al and Lutriani have put forth. Thank you.
That's good. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the school committee?
Good evening. Jeff Pottington, President of Wausaukeet Teachers Guild. As you know, we're still in negotiations for the contract between the school committee and the teachers guild. I'm very disappointed when I hear uninformed politicians on talk radio blame me for not having the contract complete by now. The contract has two parts, the teachers and the paraprofessionals sections. While we're extremely close to moving on the teachers, as I've stated for over a year now, we can't bring half a contract of the membership. We've had paraprofessional and teacher proposals ready for a year and a half. Yet, we've not exchanged the paraprofessional proposals with the other side, which drags out the process for the benefit of no one. It's obvious that it's in the best interest of the students, citizens, teachers, paraprofessionals, school committee, administration, secretaries, and custodians to get this situation resolved. I say again, we are ready. The main reason I'm here tonight is to give you some information. I hope that you'll remember this information over the next two years when it comes to getting additional support for education in Wausaukeet. On Monday, the Wausaukeet Call published a story about Ken Wagner, the outgoing Rhode Island Commissioner of Education. Outgoing means that he can state what he really thinks, and he certainly did in his interview. Commissioner Wagner's main message was that we need more choice for students, either through charter schools or regular schools to compete, and lower performing schools will improve if they're driven to compete. This is not the ultimate solution to improve schools, especially when there's not a level playing field. School choice is debated and held by many for driving innovation and sharing those innovations with other schools. I'm sure there have been many overtures from the Rye's Mayoral Academy to the Wausaukeet Public Schools to share their superior practices. No? It's because they're not superior. In the next two years, we need to level a playing field and drive innovation from within. We know the needs of the students of our city, but we do not have the adequate staff to address it. We do not have enough support staff, teachers, paraprofessionals, or administration. Case in point, with all due respect, the individual is doing a very good job. We do not have a full-time HR director, and, and you are, we still have Notre on me twice tonight to get mentioned. We have both IT and facilities handled by the same person. Why? Basically insufficient funds. We can't compete when we're so understaffed. Our students have been in needs that cannot be addressed by classroom teachers only. We need elementary guidance councils. We need more social workers. We need more special educators. We need more behavior specialists. We simply need more. We need a student-teacher ratio that's not the highest in the state. We've made that high ratio a source of pride, unfortunately, that we're able to do more with less, but we should not. The state ratio is 11 to 1. This includes not only classroom teachers, but all the additional specialists that are needed to work with our young people. I believe we're at our breaking point, and we need more support for education for our students. According to Rye's website, William Abadi Elementary and the J. Clanton Complex in Providence have a student-teacher ratio of 16 to 1. Rye claims it to be the highest in the state and over the state average, 11 to 1 by five... pardon me, the ratio by five. That's huge, but this statistic is false. Our elementary schools are higher. If you remember, 16 to 1 was very high. Vernon is at 19 to 1. Citizens is at 20 to 1. Globe Park is at 18 to 1. Potier is at 21 to 1. Harrison 18 to 1. Coleman 21 to 1. Savoy 21 to 1. Most high schools are at the average of 11 to 1, Wausaukeet's 13 to 1. And most middle schools are 10 to 1, and that is the only school that's within the average. Everybody else is well in excess in the student-teacher ratio. This, in my mind, is unacceptable. Federal guidelines for student special education in the district is 12%. We've tripled that amount at 38%. And we don't have enough staff to cover it. Clearly, this district is deficient in the amount of staff necessary to run and improve. We can talk improvement all we want, but not with these numbers. What do we need? We need the support from the state and city sources to adequately fund public education in Wausaukeet. May do with what we've got should not be acceptable any longer. Ken Wagner was quoted as saying, and I quote, "I think that Wausaukeet doesn't get the attention that it deserves," he said of the community. It's not just on them, it's on all of us to pay more attention to Wausaukeet. But from a distance, it looks like the politics is just so dysfunctional across the city council, the mayor, and the school department. I think that might be an advantage to one-zone personal fortunes, but it's such a disservice to the needs of our community and our kids. And I'll wrap up by saying, while I don't remember what he says, he is right on one thing. We all need to step up and fix this together, and every member of this committee should be lobbying the council and state representatives at every opportunity. The Wausaukeet Teachers Guild and the Rhode Island Federation of Teachers have been lobbying every chance we get, but the union is only one voice in the wilderness without any serious commitment from others, and all stakeholders must be heard to secure more funding from Wausaukeet. We're all better than this. Let's do what's best and right for our students. Thank you for listening.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the school committee? Hearing none, seeing none? Yes?
Ken Harris. I worked for the school department for 15 years now. We have 103 Prospect Street in this fair city, and let's see, I voted for you, I voted for you, I voted for you, I voted for you, and I voted for her too. And as a constituent, I'm asking you to start lobbying as much as you can, whatever it takes. It's not up to the union to do all the work for the lobbying end of it. You need to pull the weight, too. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that, although we're not required to, but I will. Just because you don't see the results that you'd like, I can tell you that members of the school committee have spoken at length to the city council, members individually and collectively, and it's ongoing. We have spoken and met with our state senators and our representatives, and we will continue to do that because we, like you, really believe that we need more money. It's got to come from the city, and it's got to come from the state. And we appreciate the fact that you did vote for us, and all of you who voted for us. But once we got elected, we have taken this responsibility very seriously because we're here for the kids, which means we're here for the parents, and we're here for the teachers, and we're here for the principals, and we're here for the administration. We are one team. You elected us to be a team, we are that team. And we will continue to do so and, and work as hard as we can with the city council and with the state. That, those were I was saying, and it infuriates me, the fact that we see no funds coming. And speaking to one of the chairs of the finance committee and to be told that this year that we no funds, the faucet has been shut off, blatantly said that. We know we have to continue lobbying, and we work with the Tim Duckies of the world as well to try to get the state to open its pocketbooks, to look north, north of Providence and say, there is a city there that's, needs help, a lot of help. And so, we, I thank you for encouraging us to continue to do that work, and I can tell you, we will continue to do that work because it's essential. We cannot increase our numbers within the schools unless we get more funding. Mr. Pottington knows this very well, and so does the union negotiation committee, and so does the school committee negotiation committee. We know we need a lot more money for us to provide the adequate number of teachers, TAs, Paris, special folks, special workers, social workers, everyone that we need in this district to, to provide the right education, the right programs, and get that class size down. So, we will continue to do that, and I like the fact that you stand up here and recommend, keep reminding us to do our job. And I can tell you from here, we are doing that job. So, thank you, my friend. Dr. McGee? Let's have some recognition and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Wausaukeet Education Department is proud to announce that three teachers have been recently recognized as Achieve 3,000 Pro Educators. I know at least one is, is here this evening, Elaine Zogradny, Amanda Charchefelia, and Sharon, actually, two are here, and Sharon Bosley, who are both recognized as those three educators. The rest of this recognition is deserved for teachers using the Achieve 3,000 Literacy Instruction Platform with the greatest consistency, innovation, and dedication to yield the most incredible literacy growth for each and every student, oftentimes exceeding what's expected by more than three times over a single school year. Congratulations to these outstanding teachers for all they do in supporting literacy instruction for our students and our teachers. I also had the pleasure of attending the musical In the Heights last Friday night at Wausaukeet High School. I just wanted to let the amazing, amazing students in our theater arts program at Wausaukeet High School. I want to thank Ms. Jen Mielo, I'm not sure if Jen is here this evening, and all the teachers there. When, just, you know, when you think each year, it can't get any better from year to year, it was just tremendous, and I want to thank you personally, and just the wonderfully talented kids that we have here at Wausaukeet High School and in the community of Wausaukeet. We, I would take them against anyone, anywhere, and I want to congratulate you and your wonderful students once again. I also had the pleasure of attending on March 21, the Wausaukeet High School Spring Concert. I want to recognize all of our wonderfully talented musicians at Wausaukeet High School, and I want to recognize both Ms. Alz and Mr. Depot for the tremendous work that they do with their students in the music department. So, I want to thank them as well. And lastly, April vacation is just around the corner. I want to wish all teachers, staff, students in the Wausaukeet Education Department a very safe, happy, and healthy April vacation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I also want to echo your words. I went to see In the Heights on Friday, and I'm expecting a great high school theater performance. It wasn't that. This was Broadway quality. I, the spirit of those kids and how the choreography worked with all those students on stage and teachers, and how the music and the songs played out, that, that room was so energized, I've never seen anything like this, not even a stadium can, could not reproduce this. So, again, congratulations to you.
Mr. Chairman, I feel the need to echo your remarks as well as Dr. McGee's. I also attended a Saturday night. I also attended the spring concert. And every time I go to these performances of students, I am so struck, every year, every year, every year, by the talent that obviously the teachers bring out and the talent that these students show. If all our adolescents in the world had that talent and kept using it in every little endeavor, what a great world we would have today with some students. So, once again, my congratulations to Ms. Mielo and the students, and it was an enjoyable night.
Hear, hear. Anyone else?
I was at both the band concert and the performance on Saturday night as well. I told my daughter, I'm really sorry she was in the high school band. She graduated in 2015, and the band in chorus sounded much better this concert than they did when she was in it. They were tremendous. It was a tremendous concert. In the Heights, as I said on Facebook, I cried the entire second half of the play, and the young gentleman who played Usnabi sent me a response back that he was sorry he made me cry. And I said, I want you to know he made me cry in a good way. I was so involved in the story. It was an incredible performance. I truly, truly enjoyed it. Didn't expect it, but I truly enjoyed it. Thank you very much for your hard work.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll, we'll go on to the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the March 27, 2019 closed session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections or deletions? None? Dr. McGee will call?
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kudyskis.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 27, 2019 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, deletions, amendments? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kudyskis.
Yes.
Let's go on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that, is there any member who would like to take any of the items out of order or have any amendments to the consent agenda? Hearing none? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kudyskis.
Yes.
No communications. Let's go on to sub, the school subcommittee reports on our staff and facilities. We met on April 4 this past week, and we covered several areas. One, we talked about playgrounds. We're going to be focusing on Savoy, Coleman, Citizens because we have to make them ADA compliant according to Rye, and so we're working that, we're working on that. We're going to be looking at what we're going to place, and what we need for those playgrounds and the course, so that's still being worked on. We're looking at a transportation contract, and we're sent out an RFP, and we will be looking to see which bus company is going to, which bus company we're going to want to utilize for the next year. And we have, I believe we have three companies. Mr. Perrier?
Yeah, that's possibly what I would consider.
We would expect.
Yeah, I would expect three companies to put a bid in.
We talked about facilities update. We talked about pre-K camera at the Career Center at Potier. We talked about, we have two open facilities positions, and they've been posted, and I believe the facility survey has, has been out, and we'll be closing on the 15th. Is that right, Mr. Torriani?
We'll be closing on the 12th, Mr. Chairman.
On the 12th. And so, we talked about that. We talked about the Career Center lavatories and water fountains to be, some of that work will be done in-house, and we have to make them ADA compliant. At McPhee, as you know, we've had odors. It seems like that's been a prevalent problem within the district. I wonder which next building is going to have odors. Who knows? But we've got the ducts cleaned, and we've got specs for the heating units, I believe, and so that will be taken care of. The Trust Safety Committee has met, and they're dealing with reviewing if there are accidents and issues that workers are facing, and maybe there are some unsafe conditions, and we'll be looking at that as well. The Savoy boiler and windows replacement are on target. We've applied for extensions to make sure that we can get the work done, and that will be done very soon. Also, we talked about universal pre-K and what we need to do with that, and we may need some classrooms for this, but that's another, that's still ongoing. I'll accept. If any thoughts, any comments? If not, I'll accept a motion to place on file the report. Notion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's turn to the Health and Wellness Committee. I'll turn it over to the co-chairs, Mr. Burke and Mrs. Nato.
Okay. Just a couple of things we discussed at the last meeting and carried over. We are also exploring bids by state law, looking at a food service provider, so we are beginning to begin the bid process for that. By the end of the year, we will have everything completed. So many exciting things with the, with Citizens Potier's Don Quixote proposal today, and we're pretty lucky, we have two other schools, two other schools that have put together a similar, a similar application for the phys ed program. The Globes, the Globe Park School, and I think Villanova? It was Hamlet, Hamlet, I'm sorry. So, how exciting now, we have three schools competing after these, to these spots. We've also received, one of our students received a great grant, I think his name was Jack Whittle from the Wausaukeet Area Career Technical Center, and he just received a $1,000 grant for an innovative program for nutrition. So, once again, our students just demonstrates such great talents. But the most important thing I want to also, as you know, when we started the presentation, I think everyone should know that all our elementary schools are involved in girls on the run, and all our elementary schools are involved, involved in box. And that says a great deal about the teachers of those schools that have stepped forward to bring leadership to those programs, and obviously for the students who are, who reap the rewards of these programs. But one of the most important things I do want to mention is the Rhode Island Heart Association. But one of the most important things I do want to mention is the Relentless Heart Association is coming to Windsocket at the end of May. The exact date was...
Mr. Kimble?
The 23rd.
The 23rd. And we're going to have a special program in the high school. We're going to make use of the cafeteria to provide dinner to families and students, and then our gymnasium will be set up with various booths and educational forums. So it's an exciting, exciting time. More information will be forthcoming, but check your calendars, May 23rd, 5 o'clock, 5:00 to 5:30, open to become part of this great program. And I think that's, that comes in, Mr. Nato, would you like to add anything?
We had a presentation on practical wear by Chris Ford, and incorporates in health and wellness now is now nutrition and the wellness of the students, but also the mental wellness of the students. And this program started at an elementary level, it's been long overdue and absolutely vital to help with the problems that kids have in our system. And these guys are doing a great job, and I hope to see it expand so that we can handle some of those emotional issues that our kids have when they come to school every day. Just back to my dear.
Good.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Health and Wellness Subcommittee Report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll turn to the Curriculum Subcommittee, and I'll turn it over to the chairwoman of the Subcommittee, Ms. Kudyszkis.
The Curriculum Subcommittee met on April 2nd. Among the issues we discussed were universal pre-K's expansion as part of the state's push to expand capacity for universal pre-K, we're partnering with Mary Bar and Head Start to open two new classrooms at Portier next year. Each classroom is anticipated to hold 18 students. One will be two half-day classes of three-year-olds, the second will be a full-day program for four-year-olds. It will be a mix of gen ed students and students with IEPs. This does not need to be approved by the school committee, but the information is perp will be provided to them informationally. No additional staff are needed, the staff are claimed from these classrooms, already have the necessary certifications. There may need to be minor modifications to existing classrooms, but at this point it's believed that all will possibly be worn by Head Start. We also discussed the Summit Program and the expansion of the Summit Program potentially to grades six and nine. Summit's an experience at Windsocket, and they're here for two more years where their services are being paid for by rent. The intent is to train WWD staff so they can take over and manage the program at the end of that period. They are suggesting extending the program to sixth grades, the full academy model will be used in both schools. The principal at Villanova has some reservations with regard to a sixth-grade expansion, she was concerned about the rigor of the program. The current plan to extend Summit to ELL population, the shift in practice takes time. It's already a challenge to the cohort that's currently selected, there's a lack of maturity evidenced in some of the sixth-grade students who are subject to self-reliant program. And in particular, she was concerned with the fact that many of our students come into sixth grade already not at grade level, and that significantly below grade level. A big part of it would also be needing the teachers, and in particular, the parents to buy into the expansion, and she worries that neither are there yet. On the other side, Principal Hamlet indicated that her sixth-grade teams are all for being in Summit. But the bottom line is, before even forward, we need a more concerted effort to reach up to the third grade students and parents, as well as teachers, to build the classrooms for Summit in the sixth grade. With regard to the expansion to the ninth grade, there should be more support. Mr. Webb informed us of the 47 PTEC students who come from the Summit Program, 46 of them, and the 10th grade passing all their classes, which is encouraging, so there is some data to support the ongoing success of Summit. Any expansion to sixth and ninth grade would require our approval as committee. Dr. McGee expressed his opinion, they would prefer to see it expand to the ninth grade next year, he has serious concerns, only ninth grade, he has serious concerns about how the sixth-grade parents will buy into it in time. Summit is not part of our current strategic plan, and we're going to need to include it if we're going to expand it. If expanded to the ninth grade, it was made clear that only eighth-grade Summit students would be eligible. The plan right now would need a plan on expanding to the ninth grade for the next school year and potentially the sixth grade in 2020, 2021. With regard to the district strategic plan, our plan expires in 2020. Dr. McGee, we'd like to send out an RFP to have Summit come work with us to create a new plan. Our current plan has too many goals, we want to limit to three or four goals so we can cut down in focus, and one focus might be personalized learning, such as Summit. The plan is putting our RFP together over the summer and have a plan in place, a strategic plan in place by the spring of 2020 while in advance for its expiration. We're going to be setting the team in the next few months with an eye towards the focus areas so that our focus areas will align with RYE's focus areas. Mr. Cameron from the Foreign Language Department of the high school presented that with the purchase of our French and Spanish textbooks two years ago, we were given online resources, but now they're expiring. He asked the WWD to purchase those online resources, a three-year contract was proposed. Mr. Cameron believes the purchase is essential to continue to offer our students the best program. The costs appear to be minimal over the potential benefit. And essentially, every student that plans to go into college needs to take two years of a foreign language, so there is a tremendous amount of student exposure to the foreign language department. This purchase would need approval from the school committee. The next curriculum Subcommittee is scheduled for May 7th at 1:00 p.m., I believe, here at the girls' school at Hamlet. Thank you.
Any thoughts, comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Curriculum Subcommittee Report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll hear from Ms. Kudyszkis again on CILAC.
The CILAC met on April 4th. We discussed updates to the Windsocket Middle School under old business, updates to Windsocket Middle School Behavioral Program. Dr. Sullivan indicated that she would ask them to present at our next meeting. The program at Villanova appears to be running quite well, the program at Hamlet is not running so well. Same issues continue to occur, kids being put into the program without following the proper procedures, and kids coming out of the program without following the proper procedures. We have a new coordinator for elementary special education, and we're hoping he, by attending all placement meetings, can help figure out what the problem is and help fix it. He will likely be the presenter at the next CILAC meeting in May. The Parents Support Group indicated that our next meeting will be next Wednesday, April 17th, at HTR in Lincoln. An update was given on DIRDR, which takes place at URI on May 26th. As a result of work to rule, unfortunately, it doesn't look like our students will be able to attend as the program runs from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., which is outside the contractual hours. We're still trying to see if parents might be willing to stay to supervise students for the balance of the day, and Department of Health has also reached out to Marcha at the Chair of the CILAC, and indicated that if necessary, Windsocket could be permitted to do a shorter day, but it would only be a half-day, and we're not sure whether or not the benefit outweighs the cost. But we're looking at all options, and there's still plenty of time to apply. An update to XQRI was also on the agenda. Laura Winter, the Secondary Special Ed Chair, attended that meeting. She said she was pleased to see that special education was in the forefront of everyone's mind. The process to apply for that planning grant has not yet been started, because Windsocket's not sure if they could handle the work required under the grant. However, she spoke about another grant, Building a Legacy, was designed to help close the reading gap level, the reading level gap in the ninth grade between kids with IEPs and kids without. There's only been one meeting so far, but she thought it was a great way to hear our, get our voices heard on these issues. With regard to prepare URI, multiple pathways, there's been questions raised with regard to accessibility for our students with IEPs. Mr. Webb gave us a wonderful handout with numbers demonstrating exactly how many students with IEPs are in all of the programs that are available through the pathways, including PTEC. And they're opening up the WACTC programs through the introduction to the pathways in on for the sixth grade, tours of the local school in the seventh grade and eighth grade open houses. They're trying to expand and expose these children to it in middle school levels so they'll be more prepared to consider if they're going to the vocational school. And this also plans to expand the vocational programs, some of them to accept ninth-grade students as opposed to 10th-grade students. And student draft, data is driving all this change. Dr. Sullivan indicated that Mr. Webb has done a great job reaching out to the special ed kids, and he's working with the high school to get services to our kids when they need them. And new business, we discussed the state support visit. Their first meeting is on April 18th, there's not much information yet, other than the usual issues, we have too many self-contained placements, we have too many kids on alternate assessment. Federal law, SS, has the percentages on student population with those placements, and we are in excess of the percentages that are permitted currently for alternate assessment, for example. We're supposed to be below 1% of our student population, and we're at 2.3 now. Parents opined that it didn't make any sense for these percentages, because the students need services, they need services whether or not it's over the percentage limits. I think pretty much all parents and staff did agree with that, but the bottom line is, the federal law is the federal law. There was an update requested, is to RYE-CAS, as well as the alternate assessment testing DLM, which is all taking place. Everything appeared to go smoothly, from what we were told, there were just maybe small bumps in the road, there were some concerns about bandwidth, and apparently that was less of an issue. Parents did ask if there were touchscreens available for the Chromebooks for the students who struggle with keyboards, and there was some uncertainty as to whether or not those were available to the students who would be taking RYE-CAS, but there might be some in kindergarten that perhaps could be accessed. There was an update provided with regard to the PAC, since the parent committees trying to work together, that is a charity to take over, as was indicated in our last school committee meeting, that Soren Seal, former school committee chair, appears to be willing to take over, he's looking for other leadership members. There were two presentations scheduled, one with regard to diplomas and one with regard to the honor societies at the high school. Unfortunately, none of the presenters showed up, so there will be, those presentations will return to the agenda for the following month, and Dr. Sullivan agreed to continue to reach out to them. Nicole Breen reached out to Dr. Sullivan, advised with regard to the lamp, one that came out of Music of the Parks series, there will be one night dedicated to Special Olympics, that we will try to run through the schools. Parents asked whether there's special education soccer programs at Windsocket, and other parents shared that there were not, unfortunately, but there are for soccer, baseball, and Cumberland, and they've always been willing to accept our students. With regard to ESY, an update was requested. It appears it will continue to be a three-day program with the hope of it to expand into a full-day program, with the academic portion in the beginning at some sort of social, emotional learning in the afternoon, but as of yet, that is not confirmed. The day of the CILAC was the day, either the day of or the day after, there was a lot of confusion about the color of caps and gowns for this year of graduation. Dr. McGee confirmed that they will be maroon and white caps and gowns this year of graduation, as has been the tradition, and that a discussion ensued as to how to expect our transgender population with regard to the school colors in graduation attire. Although it wasn't on our agenda, several parents opined that maybe choice would be a solution, letting the students pick the color, or a modification to allow the cabinet to cooperate with both colors. There will be further discussion of the transgender policy, and the policy is still being convened tomorrow. Lastly, the fire department, elementary school visits have begun and were scheduled, which made many parents very happy, who had concerns about their students being frightened of firemen in their turnout gear. And Dr. McGee indicated that he would try to indicate some results with regard to his program at one of his McGee minutes. The next CILAC meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 2nd, here at the Windsocket Middle School at Hamlet and Room 124, all are open.
Thank you, Ms. Kudyszkis. Any comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CILAC Report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on conferences and discussions. We'll hear from Mr. Notorianni on both the technology update and facilities update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. So I changed up the order, which I don't need in my report, I'm going to be telling you both the statistics, but rather than do that, I'm going to give you some detailed background in terms of what's going on in the technology department. Currently, on the services support functions, this technology department's main focus is in the process of providing technical support for the preparation of the following state assessments, RYE-CAS, the PSATs, the DLM, alternate assessment, and an extra generation science assessment. Speaking of Ms. Kudyszkis, as a concern, I apologize, I was unable to attend the CILAC meeting, but just to address the concerns publicly, we have more than enough bandwidth, specifically, I can point out, we tested 1,400 students between both middle schools over the course of two days, so that means 1,400 students were on our Wi-Fi in both of these buildings with very few issues, so bandwidth is not a concern. Specific to the request of whether or not we provide touchscreen Chromebooks to students that may not be feel comfortable with keyboards, not only we do, we do that for accommodations that are necessary for those students to have, are on the alternate assessment. At any point in time, if the staff number feels it's more appropriate for a student to have a touchscreen Chromebook, we will provide it to them, because again, we're not testing them on whether or not they have the technology skills, we're testing them on their knowledge. So any accommodation that we may need to make, we will certainly do so if we receive that request, and we have received some, and we've dispatched and accommodated up what I believe is appropriate. Moving on from that, in addition to providing technical support for state assessments, the technology department provided support for the last several weeks with Senior Portfolio Day that was held on Monday, April 9th, 2019, at the Career Tech Center. Fortunately, I was unable to attend, there was another meeting, but what I can see in the presentations were quite impressive, and I'm very proud. They showed off quite a few things that were impressive, and also integrated technology which is my personal interest. Number three, on March 20th, 2019, the technology department has taken over responsibility for providing technical support for the following systems. And I will put this out in the middle for the district. We will provide support moving forward for the simple K-12 program, the Teach Point program, and frontline evaluation system. To be specific, we will provide whatever technical support we can based on limited knowledge we have, that those systems were not supported under the technology department originally, so it's something that we are kind of learning on ourselves, but we will do whatever we can to assist the staff between now and the end of the school year to make sure that they are successful in those three systems here in the district. Moving on to data, federal and state reporting. The March 1st snapshot report has been submitted, was submitted successfully last month. We are now waiting for RYE to recalculate our state aid figures. Mr. Perrier ensures closely monitoring the situation. We're hoping that our numbers are favorable to us in terms of the recent initial state aid out of that limited pot of money that we're all talking about, but that's something that Mr. Perrier will notify you of in the future. Our next state reports that need to be submitted will be the Teacher Course Section and Student Report, which is called TCS. The TCS report is data that's used by the state to identify teachers, courses, sections, and students that are grouped together in our student information system. They take this information along with other pieces of information at the new state accountability system, the report card they issue for each school building here in the district, and this is the first year we receive them with a五星 ratings. This data is critical, that it is accurate and timely, because that is what your state report cards are based on, so that's what you see when report cards come out. This is what the data is, so what's in Skyward, we talk, teachers know what I'm talking about in Skyward, what's in there, what's on your rosters, that's what feeds to RYE, and that's, that feeds in with the state testing and all the other factors, that's how that report card is based. So just to kind of have background understanding of what we're talking about when we say TCS data. The second state, federal report that we're working on is the current, called the Civil Rights Data Collection, that's a federal report, and that is a report that's not only just by the technology department, but there are many departments here in the district to contribute information to this federal report, which they then upload and they upload their own federal state reporting reports back down to the states, and that's a work in progress between the Human Resources Office, IT, facilities, nursing. It's quite an extensive report. We suspect that it'll be finished within minutes, two weeks, which is the deadline. In terms of infrastructure or hardware here in the district, over the April break, the technology department will continue to replace the wireless access points in the district, so we started in the beginning of the year to replace our Wi-Fi, our Wi-Fi's about five years old, and we're trying to improve the bandwidth and the speed. So we've completed most elementary schools over the April break, we will complete Citizens Coleman Elementary Schools, which will lead Hamlet, Villanova, Windsocket High School, and the Windsocket Area Career and Technical Center. Once those projects are completed this year, our Wi-Fi will be up to date, and it will be current for the next five to seven years, until new technology is available. We will also be deploying patches to all of our servers over the April break, because that's just something that we normally do, it's a normal process. And on Monday, April 8th, 2019, I took a report that set up the CD4 here, Mr. David Richards from WO Radio, or Mr. Jeff Farrow is sitting in the audience, thank you, Mr. Farrow, spent quite a bit of time rewiring... Spent quite a bit of time rewiring this entire auditorium to replace the exact CD system we had before so that you can have a more, kind of personal approach. You can hear the committee and the members speaking and everyone here in the audience. So I'd like to thank Mr. Richards and Mr. Farrow for all their efforts here. It wasn't possible to do this without all of the extra work that they did. Finally, in terms of the technology report, I'll get on to the statistics, which are probably the more boring piece of this report. But for the last 30 days, we closed out 340 work orders. We've received 30 new work orders, 26 are in progress, 18 have been resolved, six are assigned, three declined. One's parts on order and one is waiting input, we're waiting for some feedback for some staff, which I think is some excellent numbers, seeing that over the last 30 days, not only do we have the ability to provide support on a daily basis for the educational needs of our students, along with our teachers who do the heavy lifting here in the district, but we were also able to do this and also prepare for the state assessments that I mentioned earlier. The second report you have in the PAC is the average day week, the average time it takes for us to close out a work order. Traditionally, we're around two days, we've been averaging four based on all the different projects. It's nice to see that not only are we preparing for state assessments, but in addition to that, all the work orders we received, our average day week response time is down to three days, which is going down and I expect it to continue to go down further as the year progresses. And the final report for technology is the, what we call customer satisfaction report. And our customers are our teachers and our faculty and our staff. I'm happy to report that the vast majority of the responses, if you look at the chart, the vast majority of responses, our teachers seem to be satisfied. At most, the way I count the chart here, we've had six unsatisfied or dissatisfied responses based on work orders. Some may be the situation where there's some confusion recently. Accidentally, someone closed out a work order thinking it was completed and it wasn't. So we filled in the work order and we took care of the situation. A couple of other things that were requested that we do not do based on our procedure here in the district. But all in all, the staff seem to be happy based on the satisfaction reports that I receive and review on a weekly basis. So that concludes my technology report. If there's any questions.
Mr. Notorianni, you mentioned in the infrastructure section of your report, in April, you're going to be replacing access points for Coleman and Citizens. Are there any other schools that will need to be done after that? Is that covered them all at this point?
At the conclusion of the April break, all of the elementary schools will be completed. And we will wait till June when school is out. And then we will go through Hamlet Middle School, Villanova Middle School, Wensocket High School, and Wensocket Area Career Technical Center. Because they are larger buildings, they have many more access points, some of which require us to walk on our lift. And when we upgrade the wireless access points, we can't do a section of a building at a time. It has to be the entire building at once. So we will hold off and we will wait. We were perfectly fine, we tested 1,400 students in this building with the current access points with no issues for Rycast. So rather than try and rush through and interfere with any type of instruction, because a lot of our instruction now is web-based on our Chromebooks, we have one-to-one here in the middle school. We will wait, hold off till after school closes in June. And we will take a couple of weeks in June before the July fourth break to complete the remaining buildings.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the March 1st snapshot report. Now, that's the major data point that's going to determine our state aid for next year. And that was put together by the technology department and working with the schools?
Yes, so that data is more or less the entire database of students here in the district. It takes into many factors, one of which being the free reduced lunch count. We take that, we take all of those numbers, we upload them to the state and they base a calculation on a snapshot on a specific date. So in order to be fair to every single district, they take as a date, specific date. They call the March 1st snapshot report, it's actually not that, I think it's actually March 7th. It's RY, I can't explain why they call the March 1st snapshot report. But on the particular date, it was March 7th this year, every district, whatever day it is, in the honor of 7th, that is what they're going to base the state funding formula on. So the preliminary numbers, Mr. Perry, he can speak to this further, that he presents to you, RY presents to you an estimate based on the October 1st snapshot report. And what they do is the final aid number or the product money that they have, they do that based on the March 1st snapshot report. So now that we've sent that in, we will do a cross-check. Once they said they accepted it, we will do a cross-check, Mr. Perry will do a cross-check to see if the numbers change. Free reduced lunch count, the higher that number is, the higher percentage that is, should in theory impact possibly, possibly. Again, the state funding formula is very complicated, Mr. Perry probably has been better than I've seen. Possibly that can indicate we may see additional state aid, which you've seen in the past three years. Correct. So what we haven't had a chance to, what RY's come up with yet and reduce it, I think in that fact it'll be next week. We did last year, next week, we will look at the numbers and see if there's any type of variance and hopefully a variance in our favor.
Just a quick follow-up on that. Has our improved technology within the district aided us and nearly touched upon making sure that all the numbers are presented in this report? Has our improvements had an effect on our comments?
So, Mr. Burke, what I would say is, the way I would word it is, I wouldn't say it's been improved in terms of our technology. I would say, I would credit the building principals here in the district, our building secretaries. After having conversations with them, you know, we have conversations on a regular basis. I mean, he has administrative team meetings. We would review and explain the reasons why the training systems need to be accurate. So I would say that the number increases on that end along with the data staff that we restructured the technology department last year. I think it's a joint effort between the staff in the technology department, work with data, and our building principals, working together, trying to make sure that our data is accurate. And I can't stress that enough, I mean, many times it leaves on the chief of health and medicine. It's the people in the buildings, it's the building principals, it's the staff in the data office, working together, making sure that our data is accurate and it's ever free. That is what's helping us out and following the process, we've laid out processes. The biggest thing I've learned is that we need to make sure we communicate why the process is in place. And when we understand why the process is in place, it carries forward and it benefits us. So I would say if anything, the principals deserve a lot of credit for the effort that they've put in in terms of making sure their secretaries and everyone to do in the apart, make sure that our data is accurate as possible before we submit to RY.
Okay, thank you.
So in following that up, Mr. Notorianni, because of all the efforts that have been made, that has helped us get better state aid in the past, is that what you're saying? That because we're timely and on top of that, we've got accurate numbers, how does that fit in?
I can actually respond to that. I think you see that the jump that we saw at the close of last year?
Yes.
That was when I think the most work was being done from that initial snapshot in October of 17 to March of 18. I think you saw that huge jump in our projected state aid. That was really, I think, when the process really got streamlined and I think everybody was really brought on board at that point. So again, I would agree with Mr. Notorianni's assessment that the technology hasn't changed, but the process and the buy-in from the staff has improved incredibly.
It's a team effort. One person, two people can't do it. Besides my district, well, we've all come together, we've all worked on the data to make sure it's accurate and it's paid off for us. At some point, our data is going to be, well, we're close to the point where I'd say our data is accurate, is fairly accurate on a daily basis, that there are not many errors out there left to find, which in one sense, from a data perspective, is excellent because that's what you want. But then at the same time, for the last couple of years, it's almost like there was this little magic rabbit pulled out of the hat because we cleaned up the data and we got more money. But we're at the point where there is, there is no locating truth and there's no fruit to reach if you climb up on the ladder because our data is fairly accurate to what we're sending to the state.
So this is consistent from what we expect, no increase in state aid? Tom, right?
Yeah, correct, Mr. Chairman. I would not anticipate much of a change based on our October numbers.
Okay, the only way it could possibly jump is if we have, if we see and we will analyze it, is if we saw an influx of additional students that qualified for free reduced lunch. So that's not attributable to an error in our system, that's just attributable to the socioeconomic status of the students that may have registered between October and March.
Correct.
And actually, I've kind of kept an eye on that with our food service director. Our free and reduced lunch numbers are very similar to what they were last year. In fact, they may have taken a small dip.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file this report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we'll go on to the facilities report. Mr. Notorianni?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. Again, I've written the report just like I did the technology one, so I'll do the statistics last because of the, you know, the boring. So, following projects were completed over the month of April, the Wensocket Area Career Technical Center. Some of them they're going to allude to based on the facilities subcommittee, I apologize if they're repetitive. We're currently planning on replacing the three exterior entrances, excluding the main entrance at the Career Tech Center because that was replaced recently and it's in excellent condition. In fact, I stopped by this morning to inspect and one of the doorways is already being replaced. I would expect by the end of this week that the remaining three exterior doorways will be replaced, they'll be secure, and they should last as well into the future. As the committee's aware, we approved the bid and we will replace all the interior bathroom doors over the April break, which will be a huge improvement because some of them don't lock, hinges are broken, they deteriorate over many, many years. We will be replacing the original water fountains with new ADA accessible units over the April break contingent upon them arriving by one day or two days. So that will be savings to the district. It will be in-house using our own plumber versus contracting out, which is originally what we had planned on doing. We will be repairing the pre-K gate in the pre-K playground. So we have a early childhood, we have an early childhood program in the Area Tech Center and the gate was broken, it hasn't been in use for, I can't, well, I'm not quite sure how long it's been, it hasn't been in use. But they haven't used it in quite a few years. So we will have a contractor out next week, as long as the parts are in, the gate will be repaired and we will be able to access the gate and enter and exit into a secondary area in the facility as they see fit. When the weather approaches, I've been in contact with the playground company that installed the original equipment there. We've talked much about pouring rubber versus mulch in the playgrounds areas because it's leveled concrete, it's ADA accessible, and it's a much safer product to use than mulch. We did have a couple of areas where the ground sunk in. The vendor has been more than generous, passed our warranty that they will be ultimately repairs. They will do so on a Friday so that the playground will be unavailable for a Friday when they are tooting. It will occur over the weekend, so that will happen once the weather approaches. I've been at the Career Tech Center over the last couple of days. We have already started running the wiring and we expect, hopefully, if all the equipment arrives by the end of the week, to have the installation of a new security camera outside the pre-K entrance doorway along with the doorbell so that the staff, when a parent or someone approaches the building, I mean, approaches the classroom, they will be notified. So based on the layout of the classroom, and I apologize to the audience because if you're not familiar with the layout, but the layout of the classroom is not conducive for teachers to see who's at the doorway. And based on the students, particularly, you know, three, four-year-olds, we want to make sure this area is secure and safe as possible. So this equipment, as long as it's available, will be installed by the end of the week. If not, when the equipment is there, it will be installed the following week for sure. Aside from that, Eastern Landscaping is going to go out and brush trees outside the pre-K playground area. Right outside the exterior area, the area's been neglected for I can't tell how long. But Eastern Landscaping will be going out next week and they will be going out with brush cutters and they will trim back everything, they will rake up the area and it will make it easily accessible for staff to go through that area, which is their means of degress in case there's ever an emergency and they have to exit the playground. Again, a lot of these things are weather permitting, but my intention is to get them completed as long as it's not pouring rain. The Fire Marshal will be conducting fire inspections throughout the Wensocket Education Department's school buildings over the course of two weeks during the month of April. The inspections may even run into early May. I have shared the testing scheduling with the building principals and we are coordinating with them due to the fact that state testing is going on in most of our buildings. So it's been a difficult task, but the building principals have been absolutely fantastically cooperating in terms of working around the schedule that they have for testing along with the fact that the Fire Marshal also has a limited schedule because they have to inspect many buildings here in the city. But I'm confident that all the inspections will occur in a timely fashion and we will remedy any deficiencies that may be identified. During the April break, state protective systems will be conducted on quarterly fire and sprinkler system inspections throughout the district, which means they will regularly go to every building and test all the fire and sprinkler systems to make sure that they are compliant and working and event, well, unfortunate event that we need to use those systems. Again, Eastern Landscaping, not only will they be working at the Career Tech Center, they'll also be removing dead tree limbs, they're hanging over on school property at the Leo A. Savoy Elementary School, along with the remnants of the tree that fell earlier this year and knocked out power to that building in, I believe it was either in January or February, I apologize what month it was. But they will be going through many of the remnants there as well. While our staffing in the facilities department is understaffed because we have several open positions, we still are reassigning staff and we've started the initial spring cleanup outside all of our elementary schools. We've started with the Leo A. Savoy Elementary School due to the fact that they do the tree trimming here. And they will proceed from Savoy through the district and pass through, cleaning up any remaining leaves, limbs, and whatever debris might be left out, mulch or whatever, to try and clean up the schools because it is important that our students, when they approach a school, it's an area that they can be proud of versus seeing a mess outside. So we will be cleaning up the buildings as best we can. In addition to that, we've also begun the process of opening dairy fields for high school sports. Aside from cleaning and setup for the sports fields, we've also attempted, we've also started the process of painting several areas in the clubhouse to freshen things up for the upcoming sports season. Wensocket's High School, we began replacing all toggle switch, light switches within the building. So what I mean by that is, most regular light switches are just a switching turn on and off, which may seem perfectly normal to have here. We have our students and they are students just like my own children. And sometimes they like to run down the hallway and flip the switch off and shut the lights off. So we will be replacing all the toggle switches in Wensocket High School, the switches where you have a key lock that allows, only allows custodians to turn the light switches on and off. So no longer will someone run down the hallway and shut the lights, which could potentially be a safety hazard. That process will take several months, but we will be completing that at Wensocket High School. Over the April break, Wensocket High School, we have banners installed over the light posts outside the front parking spots. So if you look at the front of the high school, they have lamp posts. They are perfect, Mr. Henderson has purchased some banners. I do not know what is on the banners, I didn't ask, he just requested that they be installed. We've contacted the Fire Department, we are borrowing the bucket truck, and they will be installing some banners in the front of the high school. Early today, we conducted interviews to fill the position of Facility Secretary. A position that's been vacant for over a month, with no substitute. We already got a consent agenda and it will be a secretary. I received a request from Kim Blaze that this is required of the installation of crosswalk signals in the city. I could not get the answer to exactly why the locations were chosen where they were. I did inquire that it costs $7,250 per site to install them if we wanted to do them ourselves. And the committee would like to explore that further if I could, or if any of suggestions, please let me know. We've already updated us, the Fire Department is conducting visits to primary and secondary self-attended classrooms. And the facilities certainly closes on April 12th. I can close the update. In terms of the statistics, over the last 30 days, we received 101 new work orders, 37 closed, and three assigned. The average time it takes to close a work order is 13 days, which as I say, always is not an accurate reflection of how fast our facilities department responds because if we have an emergency like a water leak or electricity go out, we don't wait for a work order, they just go out and respond and then it gets recorded. And the last statistic is customer service satisfaction. Over the course of the last 30 days, we have received 10 responses. Of the 10 responses, one was a dissatisfied, the remaining nine were satisfied. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Notorianni, and any matter of wonder.
Mr. Chairman? Just very briefly, you had the facilities custodial survey. Is that the survey you mentioned to us a few months ago? That you're going to ask teachers and staff and administration to check off certain things for the building?
Yes, Mr. Burke, okay.
And that's all done?
It will close on Friday. At the last time I checked, we're at approximately a 50% response rate, which I think is excellent. We will be taking the responses, we will be reviewing with the administrative team, we will be sharing with building principals. We will disseminate it to the facilities subcommittee, the school committee, the Red Army Trust Safety Committee. We will identify items that we can fix in-house, we will identify items that we need to subcontract out. And we will also identify items that we feel need to go into the five-year capital command that will be reimbursed by the state red.
Okay, today's end of test and students and administrators, two more... Okay, today's April 10th, and our teachers and administrators have two more days to complete the survey, and I would more encourage the teachers and the administration to present these surveys, so they can have a say in what improvements we can stop making down the road in some of the schools. Yeah, you feel to say that?
That is accurate. The building principals have, the building principals, I have requested, and they all sent out an email, reminding the staff on several occasions, the staff that have made aware this is not a reflection on the performance of any of our custodians or middle facility staff, because it's purely for us to get a snapshot picture, so we know exactly what it is we need to do to address the learning environment in their classrooms and their school buildings, to improve things for the environment that they work in.
Excellent, very good.
Mr. Notarianni, I see at number 10, you suggested a meeting be set up, Dr. McGee and Chief Oates, to explore possibly establishing a school crossing guard program. That's interesting, because in the Stone Age, when I was in grammar school, there was such a program across the city. As a matter of fact, it was very highly touted, because the crossing guards always had a picnic with Officer Pard and Officer Costa. So it was really a program that really flourished in the city. So I don't know if that's what you're talking about.
Well, that was my error, Mr. Chairman. I think I left that part open when I was speaking here. So yes, that was an option. I do believe Leo Savoy does have some student crossing guards. I believe they will, there is an adult that supervises them. I know Donovan Beare was out there from the building principal, not just any staff members, Donovan Beare is out there with the students, crossing students. I believe other staff members have filled in from time to time, making sure that all the students are safe, and it's something that we could certainly explore with Chief Oates.
Absolutely, because you may add an office with our, and we'd be interested in supervising the program. Like I said, it was very, very popular back in the day. Anyone else? Mrs. Kaviskas.
Also with regard to item number 10, I too went to school in the Stone Ages. As my daughter said, I took the SATs on stone tablets. But essentially, we had crossing guards, but when my children were children, and I inquired about crossing guards at Harris Elementary, I was told that we weren't allowed to have them anymore, because it was a liability issue. I don't know whether or not you encountered that same problem, but that was the problem we encountered, which was an issue of liability. I'd like to know.
Tomorrow I will be back and will make the appropriate phone calls to the school department attorney and the Red Island Trust to make sure that that's not the case. Quite frankly, as I stated, I know just, I personally witnessed student crossing guards at Leo Savoy, so, but based on the continuing rates, I will look into that, because if it is a liability and we're not allowed to do it, that will lead to a different discussion here in the district.
With all due respect, that was a different attorney for the school department at that point, and he seemed a lot more concerned about those issues, but I have one last follow-up question. I might presume, from the way this is drafted, that it would be the city's position that because we're requesting those same sort of crossing signals that they have on Main Street or Social Street for schools, that the fiscal responsibility for their installation falls to us and not the city?
Mrs. Kaviskas, in my conversations with members of the, I guess it would be the highway department, it is my understanding the city had limited funds, and were only able to fund the crossing signals that they installed there, but they were gracious enough to share with me the quote, just the letter of course, and it is my understanding that they would not be able to fund them for us at our schools, but they were more than happy to put us in contact with the vendor, and there'd be a potential, because I didn't know, I have a quote, that there was a discount that they received, that maybe we could get the same discount that the city had. But again, that would, that's my understanding of the conversation, and I think, I think that may be more appropriate if we had a further conversation through the superintendent's office of this, how we would go forward with that.
In speaking to the city officials and the police department, it would be interesting to know if there are any such crosswalks being contemplated for the mayoral charter school authority complaint, and who was paying for that? Because it's very possible the city is picking that up, and I think we should pursue that. I think we need to identify that.
Just in the vein of crosswalks, the school department did receive a request about updating the crosswalk behind Poland Elementary School. I was in contact with the city, because they did do this crosswalk, it has faded, and I was assured that when the good weather arrives, that they will go back, repaint it, and we do so in such a fashion that it will be much more vibrant and visible for us to cross, is that, is it Third Avenue, is that the, Third Avenue? Third Avenue, they will be making some improvements to the crosswalk there, so I will, I've saved the name of the constituent that had concerns about that, and I will be reaching out to her once I hear from the city, and they let me know that they've taken care of the issue.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file of the city's subcommittee facilities report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, no one finished business. For discussion purposes, I'll make a motion to discuss the non-union contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe we do not have all the information with regards to these contracts for tonight's review, so I'll make a motion to the table, decide them for the next meeting. Is there a second?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the 2019-2020 school year calendar for first passage. Is there a second?
Seven.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this calendar that you have for you is a little later than we typically like to present it to the committee. That's my disclaimer. The reason for that is, in years past, for many years, the superintendents association will send out a calendar to districts, to superintendents, and they just didn't send anything out this year. So I had responded to them about a week or so ago, and they had said that in, over the last few years, they've been hoping to establish sort of a statewide calendar, but the fact that, you know, many districts have eliminated the February vacation, or done different types of things, they've sort of, I guess at this point in time, come to the realization that, you know, at least for now, there will not be sort of a statewide calendar, so that was the reason that they didn't send anything out. So when I received that information, we put this calendar together for the committee's review.
Any comments on the calendar?
There are no changes.
No changes.
We still have our typical vacations, you know, February and April, so.
Okay. Sure. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Gorgé?
Yes.
Please chair her.
Yes.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. McGee, your report.
You kind of, some of you kind of stole my thunder earlier tonight, but that's okay. So that, I guess that just means that my report will be a little shorter than what it might normally be. It's just basically an update on the McPhee administration building, where we are, and, you know, what we're looking, where we're looking to go in the future. As the committee knows, we had a company come out about a month or so ago, and they came out, they did much of what was done at the Career Center in terms of cleaning out all the ductwork, they have a vacuum, and all of that work was completed. The next part of the process is, we're waiting, we're going to be receiving the specs on the work that's going to be done. We're going to receive that on Friday through Robinson Green Beretta, which is the architectural company that we contract with. Once we receive that, our plan is to have, we'll mechanical, which is the vendor that we contract with as well, when we have any work done with our HVAC systems across the district. We did meet with, as I explained to the committee a few months ago, we had met with RGB, and they had some engineers come to McPhee, and they went up on the roof, made checks in, you know, different locations, specifically the heating units that are, there are two heating units that are on the roof that provide heat to the first and second floor. The basement still utilizes an oil, a boiler. They felt as though the issue was those two units, so that's where we are right now. So they're going to be providing that spec to us on Friday, and then we'll be reaching out to the mechanical, schedule the time they can come, and the plan has been to continue to be, to remove the units on the roof and replace those units.
Do you have any estimate as to when you return to McPhee?
I don't have a definite estimate, but I would say that, yes, we approach the end of the school year, we're looking at definitely not the end of the school year, prior to the end of the school year, we're looking at more than likely sometime this summer. Even if we could go back at the end of the year, it's a very busy and hectic time, and I don't think it would be very prudent for us to do that. So, you know, we're situated, you know, many of the McPhee folks are situated at Wissaker High School, some of us are here at the Hamlet Middle School, and there's some there at Illinois Middle School. So for now, the time being, we're going to stay where we are, finish up the school year, and then as we approach the summer, and we get into the summer, that's when we anticipate it coming.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
This is a big question, I didn't hear it in your report. Was the air ever tested in the building? And were there any results?
Are you talking about mold?
No, I'm just talking about the air, the quality of the air, the degree. Was it ever tested?
Yes, so we, so we did several different types of testing. We had the fire department sweep the building, and one of them catered to make sure that there wasn't carbon dioxide, but we had our own testing done internally, because we have some meters, and we contacted a company called Acupel, who ran several meters in the building, one meter particularly over the course of a week, in two different locations, and they did several snapshots of it. They didn't detect anything that indicated that there was anything wrong with the air quality, but at the same time, one of the issues with the air quality is that the odor that we detect is a constant present odor. I was in the building today with Dr. McGee and McGee, and we faintly smelled the odor. And then it dissipates, but, you know, it doesn't, so the odor doesn't bother me, I know it bothers other people in the building. So based on, we brought in mechanical engineers, their recommendation, we're certainly not experts on the air quality in the system. Based on mechanical engineers and RGB architects, the testing that they've done in terms of looking at our systems, they believe this is what's causing the issue, which is why we're pursuing this course of action. But we did, we certainly did our due diligence and did some testing through the course of, I believe it was a couple of weeks.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:25.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Hopefully you enjoy this setup. Let's say you.
No comment.
No comment. Thanks again.